Mr. City Manager, would you call the role, please?
Councilmember Strawn.
Here.
Councilmember Ettin.
Here.
Councilmember Graff.
Here.
Councilmember Schroeder.
Mayor Row.
Here. And Councilmember Schroeder indicated ahead of the meeting that she was not able to be here this evening, and so she'll no doubt be following the proceedings when she has a chance to catch the evening light. Also with us at the dais, we have our city attorney, Rachel Tierney. I apologize, it just slipped right out of there. On my right, at the end of the dais, and our city manager, Pat Trudgeon, I think is his name, on the left side over here, on the other end of the dais. And I will not live this down, and I will owe you for a long time. We'll also introduce other participants in the meeting as various agenda items come forward. I do want to let folks know, if you have a cellphone, to make sure and silence it, or otherwise assure that it doesn't disrupt the meeting. Do we have any remote participants this evening?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
All right. We can forego the instructions for remote participants. We'll ask you, if you're able, to stand then for the Pledge of Allegiance. Next on our agenda is approval of tonight's agenda, and as we always do, we'll check with staff to see if there are any changes that need to be made this evening. Mr. Trudgeon.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We do have one item to remove from the agenda for consideration. That'd be Agenda Item 10E on the Consent Agenda. This is adopting a resolution prohibiting parking in Dale Street by the Nature Center. We do want to continue working with the county to make sure we have a sufficient area, limited area, for no parking there, so we anticipate that we'll be able to work that out in the next few days and bring that forward at a future meeting. So take that off completely, no action.
So no action on 10E this evening. All right, and this is probably a good time to let folks know, if you're not aware of what's on the agenda this evening, we do have copies of the agenda on the table under the clock in the back of the chambers, for anybody that might need that to refer to for the meeting agenda. I do want to especially note this evening, in case there are people here for the consideration of the preliminary plat for the Villas of Reservoir Woods between Schreier and Skillman west of Dale. That is on our consent agenda this evening, which is in Section 10, it's Item 10F, and it would be taken up as a motion with all of the other items in that portion of the agenda, and there'd be a limited opportunity for input and discussion, but I know that may be of interest to people in the neighborhood, so I do want to check with anybody who's here this evening, wishes to speak to or ask a question about that proposal. Once again, the preliminary plat for the Villas of Reservoir Woods between Schreier and Skillman west of Dale. If anybody's here for that item, if you could just get my attention right now, that would be great. Doesn't look to be the case, but otherwise, we would have removed that from the later part of the agenda, moved it forward so we could take that up and not force you to sit through the whole meeting. But that doesn't appear to be needed to be done, so with that, unless there are any changes from a council perspective to the agenda this evening, or items to remove from consent, all right, then a motion to approve tonight's agenda would be in order. It's been moved by Councilmember Graff, seconded by Councilmember Ettin. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes, and it's unanimous, four to zero. We have our agenda for this evening. Next is an opportunity for public comment. This is the first opportunity for public comment during the course of our meeting, and this one is actually related to items that may not be, or are not, on the agenda this evening. We do provide an opportunity, over the course of the meeting, for members of the public to speak to or ask questions about agenda items, but we do also, at the beginning of each meeting, provide an opportunity for people to speak to items that either may be of interest to people in the city or related to city business, but once again, aren't up for consideration this evening. So if anyone is here to speak on such a matter, this would be the time to do so. Is there anyone here to speak on non-agenda items under general content at the beginning of our meeting? All right, seeing no one then, we'll go on to the rest of our agenda, and that brings us then to recognitions and donations. We've got three items in that section of our agenda. The first two are proclamations, the third is accepting some donations. The first item under this section is 5A, which is to issue a proclamation in relation to Peanut Day in support of the Golden Kewanis Organization in Roseville, and we have a representative from the Kewanis Organization who will set the stage with a little bit of background information for us to then adopt the proclamation. Welcome, and if you could just introduce yourself, and look forward to hearing what you have to say.
Yes, I'm Jim Boyer, the president of the Kewanis Northeast Metro Golden K Club, and we're here to ask you to make a proclamation around Peanut Day, which you've done in the past. I just want to make a few very brief comments. This club is now in its 42nd year, and our mission, as is the mission of Kewanis in general, is to improve the world of one child and one community at a time. And in accordance with that mission, the members of our club actively work to support initiatives around children and youth, and around community food security issues. We do this through volunteer assistance and financial support, which we provide from our club. Since 2009, we've got a very good record back in 2009, we've put in tens of thousands of volunteer hours, if you really add it up, somewhere around 100,000, over $400,000 of support to our local community, again, focused on children, youth, community service kinds of issues. The kind of organizations we work with, or the organization we work with and provide support to include Kids That Need Foundation, Community Partners with Hughes, Every Meal, Ralph Reader, Cube Stand Community Services, See My Starving Children, Bridging, Northeast Youth and Family Services, Northeast Therapeutic Services. We also support a Shoreview YMCA Montreal Courts program. We volunteer in the local schools. And our annual peanut campaign is our primary fundraiser for the year, and it's what provides our ability to do this within our community. So it's a very important part of what we do every year, and we ask that you approve the resolution, and I think we forwarded it to you earlier, and help us kick off this campaign. Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you for all that your organization does in our community and the surrounding communities. We really do appreciate it, and I think it's a small part we can do to do Peanut Day to help kick off your campaign, and we wish you great success in that fundraising. With that, I will go ahead and read the proclamation, and then a motion from the council will be in order, and then the peanut sales will commence. With that, the proclamation reads, "Whereas the Northeast Metro Golden K Kewanis Club, headquartered in Roseville, is an organization dedicated to improving the lives of children and youth, and whereas the Golden K Peanut Campaign provides businesses, professional entities, and individuals the opportunity to help support community initiatives focused on children and youth and food insecurity. And whereas, in order to help finance its many and varied programs, the Northeast Metro Golden K Kewanis Club has requested a day be designated as a kickoff for its annual peanut campaign fundraiser. Now therefore be resolved that the City of Roseville hereby proclaims Monday, July 24th, 2023, as Roseville Golden K Kewanis Peanut Day. And witness thereof, I will sign the proclamation once we've got a motion."
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Ettin, seconded by Councilmember Strawn. Any discussion on the motion?
Thank you.
Very good. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes, unanimous, four to zero. That proclamation is approved.
May we come forward briefly and help us kick off our campaign?
Absolutely. Thank you. Here we go. Here's the proclamation, that way. That's great. Thank you again for everything you do, and thanks for everyone for their generosity this evening. Don't forget your folder in the front.
Dr. House, there's a folder in the front row.
We gave you too much paperwork to keep track of. All right, our second proclamation this evening is in relation to Karen Martyrs' Day, and I'll read that one as well. The proclamation reads as follows, "Whereas the City of Roseville is committed to recognizing and honoring the contributions of all members of our communities, and whereas the Karen are indigenous people of Southeast Asian countries of Thailand and Burma, which is now known as Myanmar, the Karen aided the British during World War II, and many Karen were killed in the effort. And whereas on August 12th, 1950, Karen National Leader Sa Ba Loo Phee, the founder and president of the Karen National Union, or KNU, was assassinated with eight of his colleagues in the Karen state of Burma by the Burmese army. And whereas ever since then, August 12th is recognized as Karen National Martyrs' Day. And whereas on Martyrs' Day, Karen people all over the world commemorate and honor fallen leaders, soldiers, and civilians that have lost their lives in the struggle for freedom, democracy, and human rights for the Karen. And whereas there are more than 20,000 Karen refugees who now call Minnesota home, making it the largest Karen community in the United States. And whereas a growing number of Karen refugees make their home in Roseville and neighboring communities, now therefore be it resolved that the City of Roseville hereby declare August 12th, 2023, to be Karen Martyrs' Day in the City of Roseville."
So moved.
All right, moved by Councilmember Strawn, seconded by Councilmember Graff. How's that? All right, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes, unanimous, four to zero, and I'll just note that we'll give a copy of that resolution to the Karen organization in Minnesota as well, and it is available in both English and Karen. That then brings us to the third item under recognitions and donations, and tonight we have the opportunity to accept a number of general donations to the City of Roseville Parks and Recreation Department, and I'm not sure who is introducing this item. Mr. Trudgeon, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you mentioned, we have to officially accept donations made to the City of Roseville, and specifically to the Parks and Recreation Department. In the staff report is a listing of donations we've received throughout the year so far, and we do need to recognize that officially, but we certainly want to also just personally thank everyone that's on that list for their very generous donations. We have some fairly small ones, there's some very significant ones, but all are very, very important. So they are listed. The total of donations we have received is $91,909.65, and as you can see, they're often donated for specific uses, so they'll be put to good use. So we thank all the people that have donated, and look forward to using those dollars to improve our park and recreation system. So with that, we do have a resolution that the city council needs to officially adopt, and then we should be all set.
All right, thank you, Mr. Trudgeon. Are there any questions from council for staff on this item? All right, seeing none. Is there a motion on the requested resolution? So move. It's been moved by Councilmember Ettin, seconded by Councilmember Graff, to adopt the resolution approving and accepting those donations. Any discussion on the motion? It's the maker, Councilmember Ettin.
Appreciate all their support.
It's the second, Councilmember Graff.
The only thing I'd say is it's really good to see that the community really supports our Parks and Recreation Department on a monetary level, as well as using it, because our parks are used by a lot of people, so it's really good to see that number.
All right, if there's no other discussion, we've got the resolution before us. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes, unanimous, four to zero. Those donations are officially accepted, and we appreciate, once again, all those generous donors who've given to the park system this year and over the years, and who will continue into the future, certainly. With that, then, we've got no items removed from consent for separate consideration, so we can proceed with our business items this evening. We have two business items. The first, Item 7A, is to consider a resolution approving interim use for Prince of Peace Lutheran Church to temporarily allow two mobile residential microunit dwellings at their site at 2555 Victoria Street. We have our senior planner, Thomas Pachsky, with us this evening to, if not our city planner, Thomas Pachsky, with us this evening to present this item. Mr. Pachsky.
Thank you, Chair, members of the city council. As you may recall, back on March 6, you directed Prince of Peace Lutheran Church to go through the interim use process for two micro dwelling units, or what we referred to them as back then, were two mobile residential dwelling units, that were on their property at 2555 Victoria Street, because the city had determined those units to not be in compliance with the city code. Back in May of '21, this year, they made application, or filled out the necessary paperwork to do the open house, and so they held that open house on May 21st for those two units. It was well attended, you have that information in your packet. The next step in the process is to apply for the interim use, which they made that application on June 2nd. And the city planning division went through the process of reviewing the application as well as the interim use. There are three standards, they're fairly general, as it relates to that particular request, and the two micro dwelling units, and you have our analysis in your packet of how we made our determination or conclusion on those three criteria. On July 5th, the Planning Commission held the duly noticed public hearing for the interim use, and had some questions of staff, and on a six to one recommendation, we're in support of supporting the interim use request, subject to three conditions. Those three conditions are that the interim use expire on December 31st, 2023, that the two micro dwelling, or micro unit dwellings, instead of three, are permitted until December 31st, 2023, and that Prince of Peace Sacred Community meets all requirements of the sacred communities and micro unit dwelling legislation that was approved and goes into effect on January 1st, 2024. Our recommendation, as stated in the staff report, is to support the interim use with those three conditions of approval. I conclude my presentation. Open it up to your questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Pachsky. Are there questions from the council for staff on this item? I did just want to clarify one thing in the resolution, and you stated also, you say that the interim use goes until December 31st. Is it our understanding as staff that goes through the end of that day when we say that in our approval?
Yes, I suppose midnight.
Right, okay, because certainly we don't want like a one-day gap between our interim use approval and the law going into effect.
It'd be midnight, because I believe at 12:01 is when the law would go into effect.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that for the record, too, so that there wasn't any concern about that. Other questions from the council? All right, is there any, Councilmember Strawn?
Mr. Pachsky, thank you for being here, thank you for the presentation. Can you clarify, in item number two, two micro dwelling units instead of three, I believe I know the answer, but can you explain for anyone else why it indicates that?
State statute will require them to have three in order to be compliant with the legislation that was crafted, and so the interim use is only for the four, in essence, to get them to the point of the legislation going into effect that supports these units in the community that they created.
Okay. I heard the number four, did you mean two?
Two, sorry.
Okay. All right, is there anyone from Prince Peace, or the organization, supporting this effort that wishes to make a statement in support of their interim use this evening? It's completely optional, but certainly if you wish to do so, this would be that opportunity. Once again, if you could introduce yourself at the beginning of your remarks.
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. I'm Michael Stepsler, president of Prince of Peace. Again, to be brief, just wanted to thank you for engaging in this process. We think this is going to help our community and certainly the people that we serve. I just had one thing to add, and then we can put it in the record at a later time, but I've been asked by the St. Paul Senate of the ELCA to note that the Senate Assembly did pass a resolution in support of this concept of tiny homes and so forth, so I would just like the record to reflect that, that they just wanted to know that the church in St. Paul is supportive of this concept. Thank you.
Thank you for being here this evening, and the work that you continue to do with your congregation. Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak in support of, or in opposition, I suppose, to this interim use approval this evening? Is there anyone from the public who wishes to speak? All right, seeing no one, otherwise the opportunity is here, and you could have a seat at the microphone if you do wish to. I want to make it clear that I'm not just checking to see. All right, doesn't appear that anybody is here to speak on that. All right, with that, then, we'll move to council consideration of the interim use, and we do have a requested resolution in the packet. I did want to just check with staff very quickly to talk to us for a moment about sort of the process for the city between now and the first of the year of 2024, in terms of our plans as to what we're going to be thinking about doing related to some of the options that cities have in terms of dealing with the legislation. I don't know if Mr. Pachsky can talk about that, because I imagine there's some steps that we'll be needing to take before that.
Sure, Mayor. I think we have tentatively scheduled for August 21st a discussion with the council about how we might want to amend our zoning code to address the legislation that goes into effect on January 1st. The legislation specifically says that unless the municipality has designated a sacred community a permitted use, it has to be regulated as a conditional use without the application of additional standards. So we'll be having that conversation with you on August 21st, so we can get some direction on how we might amend our zoning code to deal with this.
And then potentially, if we come down on the side as a city of having a conditional use requirement, that would be something that conceivably the Prince Peace establishment would have to have in effect, or get into effect, to continue that use after the first of the year, would that be correct?
You know, we haven't specifically talked with the city attorney about that. I know the interim use that is in your packet this evening has a deadline, drop dead date of the end of this year, so potentially, yes, that that might be something that they would have to undergo.
Okay. I just wanted, since we had a bunch of folks paying attention to this now, I just wanted to make that known as a potential possibility. It's going to be subject to whatever our discussion as the council is in August as to how we want to do it. Under the law, it could be conditional, it could be permitted, and then we'll just have to take the steps between that discussion and the end of the year to get us to the point we want to be at, so stay tuned. Thank you again, Mr. Pachsky, I appreciate that. With that, we have the requested resolution in the packet. Is there a motion from the council? Councilmember Graff.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Graff, seconded by Councilmember Strawn, to approve the resolution in the packet, which approves the interim use for the use as described through December 31st, 2023, with the conditions as noted. Any discussion on the motion? It's the maker of the motion, Councilmember Graff.
No, I just want to thank Prince of Peace for their work. I think the open house was a great success, and I've heard some really good things from that. The community saw what you have there, and that helped them understand the concept a lot better, so I think the process will really be positive.
Any other discussion? It's the second of the motion, Councilmember.
I appreciate that ongoing dedication. I think when we heard, first of all, there was a little hesitancy, like, is this something that you just want to do long-term? And I appreciate that, such a large commitment of folks who are part of this, to see this as a long-term solution, and I appreciate that, working together, because obviously we have a lot of things to hammer out as things become a new law that we are all learning more about as we go, so I think, but it's a step in the right direction for us to understand how to work together. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion? Councilmember Ettin.
Previously, I was concerned about the health and welfare aspects, for example, very much, especially the anchoring of the units, and I will support this measure, because I think it's good for the purpose of working on affordable housing, and taking care of both the housing and now they are secure and safe units, so I appreciate that movement from the church.
If there's no other discussion on the motion, we've got the motion before us to approve the resolution approving that interim use as outlined. Without any further discussion, then, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion passes, unanimous, four to zero. That interim use is approved, and we look forward to the continuation of the process, and, you know, good housing for folks in the community. If folks wish to stay for the rest of the meeting, you certainly can, but there's no requirement, so don't be shy. I'll just note that the next item on our agenda, our business items, is Item 7B, which is actually to receive information from our city attorney in relation to the various cannabis laws, or law that has gone into effect, and the various impacts that it has on the City of Roseville going forward. And so with that, I don't know if there's anything introductory from Mr. Trudgeon, so I'll turn it over to our city attorney, Rachel Tierney.
If I could just have the controller show the computer on the screen, please. Thank you.
Well, am I allowed to touch the microphones? Well, packet's fired up. So I plan to talk about a few things today that are pretty limited, because this law is huge, but I'm happy to take questions and might have answers. My main focus is on what the city can do from kind of a regulatory perspective. So, as you know, this law passed late last summer, or I guess, late this spring, didn't catch anyone by surprise, but has a lot of surprises in it. So the first thing I just want to do is just a little bit of table setting, which is the law kind of created two concepts, and for sake of these, we, at least the lawyers in our office, as we discuss this, are dividing these different uses into two different terms. One is cannabis, and one is hemp. Cannabis is the higher potency substance that hasn't yet been legal. Hemp is what we've all been calling edibles. So that's the lower potency, the stuff that's legal now, and licensing, we are licensing it now, so as I'm going through this conversation, I'm going to do my best to clarify, because some of these regulations apply only to one or the other, and some of them, we're not sure yet. So as I go through, if you do have questions about which one, I can let you know whether it is one, both, or we're not totally sure. So that's the first, just kind of background. The next is just the state law, 2022, we learned, that was a little more of a surprise, that lower potency hemp products, THC products, were legal. And as you know, Roseville sought to license that, and you've got eight licenses out there now, or eight of the...
Seven going to be eight.
Seven going to be eight out there now, and the question is, what comes next? So the current city regulations, like I said, you have six city licenses, or eight, seven city licenses, you're capped at eight. It appears that Roseville's ability to regulate through licensing is going to remain until the state takes over. The date that the state takes over is somewhat in flux. We believe that the state will take over the process as soon as the state starts issuing licenses. That's not a hard date. They're supposed to be moving by March of 2025, that is when they're supposed to be up and running. They expect to be running earlier. The date that we're hearing now is January of 2025, is when they expect to start licensing. The city's current licensing scheme...
So we'll be having that conversation with you on August 21st so we can get some direction on how we might amend our zoning code to deal with this.
And then potentially, if we come down on the side as a city of having a conditional use requirement, that would be something that conceivably the Prince Peace establishment would have to have in effect or get into effect to continue that use after the first of the year. Would that be correct?
You know, we haven't specifically talked with the city attorney about that. I know the interim use that is in your packet this evening has a deadline, drop dead date of the end of this year, so potentially yes, that that might be something that they would have to undergo.
Okay. I just wanted, since we had a bunch of folks paying attention to this now, I just wanted to make that known as a potential possibility. It's going to be subject to whatever our discussion as the council is in August as to how we want to do it. Under the law, it could be conditional, it could be permitted, and then we'll just have to take the steps between that discussion and the end of the year to get us to the point we want to be at. So stay tuned. Thank you again, Ms. Gunlock, I appreciate that. With that, we have the requested resolution in the packet. Is there a motion from the council?
I'll move.
Councilmember Groff.
Second.
Right, been moved by Councilmember Groff, seconded by Councilmember Strawn to approve the resolution in the packet, which approves the interim use for the use as described through December 31st, 2023, with the conditions as noted. Any discussion on the motion as the mayor of the motion, Councilmember Groff?
No, I just want to thank Prince of Peace for their work. I think the open house was a great success, and I've heard some really good things from that. The community saw what you have there, and that helped them understand the concept a lot better. So I think the process will really be positive.
Any other discussion as the second of the motion, Councilmember Strawn?
I appreciate that ongoing dedication. I think when we heard, first of all, there was a little hesitancy, like, is this something that you just want to do long-term? And I appreciate such a large commitment of folks who are part of this to see this as a long-term solution. And I appreciate that working together, because obviously we have a lot of things to hammer out as things become a new law that we are all learning more about as we go. So I think, but it's a step in the right direction for us to understand how to work together. Thank you.
Any other discussion on the motion, Councilmember Groff?
Previously, I was concerned about the health and welfare aspects, for example, very much, especially the anchoring of the units. And I will support this measure, because I think it's good for the purpose of working on affordable housing and taking care of both the housing and now they are secure and safe units. So I appreciate that movement from the church.
Great. If there's no other discussion on the motion, we've got the motion before us to approve the resolution approving that interim use as outlined. Without any further discussion, then, all those in favor signify by saying hi.
Hi.
Opposed. That motion passes unanimously, 4 to 0. That interim use is approved, and we look forward to the continuation of the process and, you know, good housing for folks in the community. If folks wish to stay for the rest of the meeting, you certainly can, but there's no requirement. So don't be shy. I just note that the next item on our agenda, our business items, is item 7B, which is actually to receive information from our city attorney in relation to the various cannabis laws or law that has gone into effect and various impacts that it has on the city of Roseville going forward. And so with that, I don't know if there's anything introductory from this position. So turn it over to our city attorney, Rachel Tierney.
If I could just have the controller show the computer on the screen, please. Thank you.
Well, am I allowed to touch the microphones? Well, packets, that fired up. So I plan to talk about a few things today that are pretty limited, because this law is huge, but I'm happy to take questions and might have answers. My main focus is on what the city can do from kind of a regulatory perspective. So as you know, this law passed late last summer, or I guess late this spring. Didn't catch anyone by surprise, but has a lot of surprises in it. So the first thing I just want to do is just a little bit of table setting, which is the law kind of created two concepts. And for sake of these, we, at least the lawyers in our office, as we discuss this, are dividing these different uses into two different terms. One is cannabis and one is hemp. Cannabis is the higher potency substance that hasn't yet been legal. Hemp is what we've all been calling edibles. So that's the lower potency, the stuff that's legal now and licensing, we are licensing it now. So as I'm going through this conversation, I'm going to do my best to clarify, because some of these regulations apply only to one or the other. And some of them, we're not sure yet. So as I go through, if you do have questions about which one, I can let you know whether it is one, both, or we're not totally sure. So that's the first, just kind of background. The next is just the state law, 2022. We learned, that was a little more of a surprise, that lower potency hemp products, THC products, were legal. And as you know, Roseville sought to license that, and you've got eight licenses out there now, or eight of the...
Seven going to be eight.
Seven going to be eight out there now. And the question is, what comes next? So the current city regulations, like I said, you have six city licenses, or eight, seven city licenses, you're capped at eight. It appears that Roseville's ability to regulate through licensing is going to remain until the state takes over. The date that the state takes over is somewhat in flux. We believe that the state will take over the process as soon as the state starts issuing licenses. That's not a hard date. They're supposed to be moving by March of 2025. That is when they're supposed to be up and running. They expect to be running earlier. The date that we're hearing now is January of 2025 is when they expect to start licensing. The city's current licensing scheme, part of it excludes what is defined as exclusive liquor stores in state law from holding licenses. And that's actually an umbrella term that includes both on- and off-sale licenses. The state law allow, will allow both of those kinds of establishments to hold, sorry, will allow liquor licensed establishments to hold hemp licenses, not cannabis, just hemp. In fact, the state law says if you currently hold a liquor license, once they're up and running, that a hemp license, pretty much automatic. The state law allows Roseville to give licenses to those kinds of businesses for hemp licenses The state created an Office of Cannabis Management, which we've all heard a lot about. That is the website we're all stalking for updates. It is, it was established effective in July. They have a tremendous rock to push up a hill. They were given a tremendous amount of work to do. I am not going to run through all of the work that the Office of Cannabis Management is going to do. What I'm going to tell you is what's the most important to cities. They're supposed to develop some model regulations. One of them is a time, place, and manner ordinance. Cities are given the ability, for certain for cannabis and probably for hemp, to regulate the location of these businesses. So able to put in your zoning code where this stuff can go. We're not sure what the state's going to allow, but the Office of Cannabis Management is supposed to draft a model ordinance that'll provide a lot of guidance. They are also supposed to create standardized forms for retail registration. We'll talk in a minute about what retail registration is, but that's one of the responsibilities that cities will take on. They're supposed to draft model policies and procedures for compliance checks. It's another responsibility that cities are going to take on. They will establish a complaint process for local government. Because this is not a city license, the enforcement isn't through the city. The enforcement is through the state. But the cities are supposed to get a fast track to make complaints and have those investigated within 30 days. They're going to develop that process. And finally, they're establishing the forms and procedures for licensing. There's a whole bunch in there about what's required for licensing. I'm not going to spend time on that, because you guys don't get to pick. But just know that there's a pretty robust set of regulations for who will obtain licensing and what that process looks like at the state level. So like I said, we're going to start with hemp. City's ability to regulate, cities will license until March of 2025, but like I said, if the state starts issuing licenses, they're going to preempt your license. You can maintain your cap on licenses. That would prevent future uses from being established. But there's something important to say, which is, although it appears from the legislation that cities will be able to create zoning restrictions for hemp products, it isn't crystal clear. So it's possible that the state will not allow cities to zone hemp products. One of the things that concerns me about the state regulation is that it also says if you hold a liquor license, you can have a hemp license. Well, that doesn't gel very well with the city's ability to regulate through zoning. I'm just not sure. So we'll have to see what the state says about that. We'll keep track of it, let you know. On a long-term basis, there are some things that the city can do. One of them, which perhaps you've been reading the newspaper about, because the regulations are popping up quick, is prohibit use in a public place. And this applies to both hemp and cannabis. So as of August 1st, it's legal in the state of Minnesota to recreational consumption of cannabis can be done in any place where it isn't prohibited. Cities are allowed to prohibit the consumption of cannabis in a public place. Somewhere here, I have a definition of public place. But I'm not hitting right on it. Ah, public place. Private residence, curtilage, or yard is not a public place. So pretty much that's your house and your yard. Private property that's not generally accessible to the public is not a public place. And the premises of an establishment or an event that's licensed to permit onsite consumption is not a public place. So that's where you cannot ban it. Otherwise, public places, I wouldn't say wide open, but maybe a kind of rational, what you would rationally think of as a public place, on a sidewalk, in a park. Those kinds of things, I think, are clearly public places.
Great. Can we pause? That public place is licensed, so people could be using marijuana at one of our local restaurants once it has a hemp license for a second. They could be consuming edibles at a local restaurant?
Yes, they could be consuming edibles, they could be drinking a THC beverage, excuse me, in a restaurant. I will say that the Clean and or Air Act does apply to marijuana. So they're not, nobody's going to be smoking marijuana someplace you couldn't otherwise smoke a cigarette. Those rules are the same, from a Clean and or Air Act perspective.
How would that impact schools? Not that we regulate schools, but if they're in the city, would that, could we regulate? Or is that already part of the Clean and or Act that they cannot have smoking on premises?
I am not sure if it's regulated by the Clean and or Air Act, but I believe cities would be able to ban their use in their own property. Plus, no one under 21 is allowed to consume. And I did, I read the regulations about like consumption in front of people under 21, and I think it's okay in your own home, but I'm not sure whether it's okay outside of your own home. I'm not sure about that one. All right. So like I said, there's no explicit restrictions on the city's ability to regulate hemp sales from a zoning perspective. We're not sure about that one. It appears that we'll be able to regulate, you know, I'd be, I won't guess. There is no ability explicitly in the state law that would allow you to outright prohibit hemp uses. The other thing that doesn't appear to exist in state law is your ability to cap it. You do have an ability to cap cannabis businesses. There does not appear to be a similar cap for THC businesses, which also makes sense if you think about the liquor license kind of automatic. So it looks like you don't have the ability to cap after the state starts licensing. Okay, let's move on to cannabis products. One of the things that you can do now is to enact a moratorium on cannabis businesses. Cannabis isn't legal right now. There's, nobody's going to try to set up shop tomorrow. This is a judgment call. Your regulation could be effective until January 1st of 2025, which is a little longer than a standard moratorium. But at that point, it would, it will automatically terminate whether you want it to or not. Like I said, the current date that the state is telegraphing for starting to issue licenses is January of 2025. So the benefit would be if the state started to license earlier than that, and you didn't have your zoning regulations ready to go, and a use were to establish. It's a low risk right now. It's not something to be in a hurry about, but it is something to consider. And if you want to talk about it further, we can certainly talk about it further. I don't think that there's a risk in the next six months of the state quit getting their act together and issuing cannabis licenses. But, you know, as they start to prepare, and we will definitely keep an eye on their dates for when they're going to start taking applications, you know, before, if you're going to do a moratorium, you'd probably want to get it out there before the applications are taken, if they're going to be January 1st. But we'll keep an eye on that and definitely keep you posted as that gets closer.
I think it would make sense to kind of remind ourselves in that, you know, end of the first quarter of next year timeframe, to think about that at the latest, in case we want to make sure we put that into effect, because we want to give ourselves enough time to make sure we get our regulations into effect. But I don't think we have to enact it today.
Well, and the other thing is, you only need the moratorium if you don't have your regulations ready. You don't need a moratorium if you've decided which, how you want to zone this, and that you just pass those regulations. So, you know, it's kind of, what timing are you looking at, and how do you want to plan that? On the other hand, you really shouldn't be adopting zoning regulations before you get a model ordinance from the state. So there's a lot of different balls in the air, and it's just sort of how do you want to, how do you want to manage those? Effective, let's see, in order to adopt a moratorium, you need a public hearing. That's kind of pretty standard. From a long-term perspective, there's a whole bunch the city needs to consider. One is what they're calling the time, place, and manner restrictions. That's, those are the zoning code restrictions, where can these establishments be in your city? And that's definitely something that I would highly recommend, you thoughtfully do. Then there's, there are several other provisions that probably should end up in an ordinance. Technically, you have the choice of whether you want to issue permits. So state law says that cities need to issue permits or, why can't I think of the right word?
Register.
Register, thank you. Need to register these licenses. So the way it's going to go is, the state will receive a license application, they'll be ready to issue the license application, then they're going to notify the city and say, hey, we want to put this in Roseville at such and such location. The city has 30 days to respond about whether that meets your building code, fire code, and zoning code. And at that point, you can require them to register with the city. They will have to register either with the city or the county. But with that registration scheme, that comes your ability to cap licenses. You can cap licenses at one per 12,500 residents. I wanted to say citizens, but that's never, it's residents. And so if you want to cap it, you can cap it higher than that, but that's your, that's the lowest you can go is that number. There is also out there the ability to use a state, a county cap, which is a little bit confusing. So they'll do some math and say, how many can there be in the county according to this one per 12,500 metric? And if the city doesn't set its own cap, the city can just rely on the county's cap. So if the county gets to that top number, then the city doesn't have to have any. I would encourage you not to rely on that county number, and just figure out what's right for Roseville and go for that. So the city regulations can include your, oh, I should say, for the zoning restrictions, state law allows you to say 1,000 feet from a school, and then 500 feet from a daycare, residential treatment, or a public park that's used regularly by minors. So if it was just open space, that's parkland, probably wouldn't be able to prohibit it. But if you've got fields or a playground, or something that would regularly be used by children, or maybe even something that you program regularly for children's activities, those would be parks that you would be able to prohibit establishment of the cannabis business from 500 feet. And like I said, we think, the hemp as well, but we're not sure.
Good. Just on that, is there a sense as to whether we want any consistency between what we might do with cannabis and/or hemp establishment locations in our zoning code and things like liquor stores from the point of view of sort of treating somewhat equal things equally? Because right now, we don't really have very many restrictions, if any, in our zoning code about location of liquor stores, and certainly not on-sale establishments, other than, you know, they have to be restaurants or have at least 50% of their revenue from non-alcoholic sales.
I think that makes a lot of sense, to treat hemp like you would treat on-sale. So this would maybe be the time when you have that conversation about whether you want to have distance restrictions for on-sale licenses. You're going to find yourself in a weird gray area of what do you do about existing on-sales, and can they have hemp? I think you're probably preempted by state law from denying it for currently licensed, but maybe not, hard to say. You know, this is one of those areas where, what, what is it? Is it, how does the state want to treat it? So that will be a good, hopefully clarity that the state will provide.
And then there's off-sale too, of course.
And then there's off-sale too. And you don't have distance restrictions for off-sale either?
No.
Okay. So yeah, you know, off-sale would be, I would include that with the same analysis of on-sale, although many cities don't regulate on-sale and off-sale the same. Like an off-sale liquor store is more heavily regulated from a distance perspective to avoid concentration than on-sale. So, you know, and maybe the same is true for hemp products too. It's one thing to be able to walk in and have a THC beverage with your dinner, and it's quite another to walk in about a six-pack. And so maybe, you know, maybe the distance restrictions make sense in a different way. But again, these are all things, conversations to have, starting now. Although, again, I just wouldn't pass anything until the state gives you some sort of model.
No, I just wanted to make sure as to that question about whether we should be looking at the liquor sale side of it, just because I don't want to be in a position where you put something to effect that's much more strict for cannabis and indoor hemp products than liquor stores, and people are looking at that as not equitable between the two and, you know, causing us issues.
Well, and I think that's a, that's a good, really good point to make, because I think that you should think of them moving forward as kind of twin licenses.
Great. What do we do, this is probably getting to the nitty-gritty, but what if a daycare center wanted to move in within 500 feet of something, one of these? Then they're just not allowed to, if the other businesses already is there?
Whoever comes in first.
Yeah, generally, the prohibition is kind of a one-way. You know, if the use is established, from a zoning perspective, you know, use is run with the land, so we wouldn't prohibit someone from engaging in a non-conforming zoning activity.
And that would affect daycares, then they have to be 500 feet or whatever.
Well, the daycare, if the daycare wanted to move next door, the daycare isn't prohibited from being there from a zoning perspective, because your zoning regulation doesn't tell the daycare where it could go.
They could choose to go there.
The general requirements for daycares and other things.
Right, right. But I mean, it doesn't have, you know, you don't say daycare, but not established, right. Right. Okay, so, moratorium. So one of the other things you should consider, and this would apply to, again, we think just cannabis, but it may also apply to hemp, which is operating hours. So the state operating hours, and the way this is written in the statute is kind of upside down, but I think I translated. The states are allowed, the state law allows a cannabis establishment to open at 8:00 a.m. and then close the next day at 2:00 a.m. On Sundays, they can't open until 10:00. But 2:00 a.m. is the closing time. You're allowed to restrict that quite a bit, actually, and get it down to opening at 10:00 a.m. and closing at 9:00 p.m. every day. The states, the cities are allowed to reduce the hours to that extent. I did check, cross-check how that tracks with liquor law.
You anticipated my question.
I did. I knew I was going to forget something. It sounds right, doesn't it?
Because with on-sale, anyway, for the liquor, you can either limit it to 1:00 a.m. or 2:00 a.m.
Right.
Under that law change that went into effect a few years ago. So it'll be interesting, once again, to try to look at parity or equity, or whatever the right terminology is, between those types of licenses and time limitations.
I think off-sale is open until 10:00 p.m., isn't it? But I'm not sure cities have to let it be open early.
Yeah, I'm sure, I think the off-sale limitation is, I think, 10 or something like that. But we want to look at kind of all that in context with each other.
Right, yep. Let's see, the other thing is, they've invented a concept of a cannabis event, a temporary cannabis event. They're up to four days long. There's all kinds of restrictions. I don't know. They're up to four days, I think I have some more notes on that. Yes, four days long. They do require local approval, and the local approval would include approval of onsite consumption. They, it just, I did look at the state regulations a little more on this one. Only over 21 allowed. Onsite consumption, if it's allowed, can't be visible from any public place. If there's onsite consumption, then there can't be any tobacco or alcohol consumption allowed. And regardless, there's no smoking where it would be prohibited by the Clean and or Air Act. This is one of those where cities are going to be allowed, we've had extensive conversations about what does all of this mean from a city perspective, and what can you say, no, we can't have them at all? I'm not sure. I think you could prohibit them in your parks. You could probably not allow your facilities to be used for these kinds of events. But other than that, I really hope the state kind of fills in the gaps here about what you're allowed to do and what you're not allowed to do. There are some detailed regulations about who can be there, and what the criteria are, and who can go in, and how there's security required and all of that. But I'm hopeful... Um, but I, I'm hopeful that you can, we can apply just traditional event restrictions to these kinds of restrictions. That's what it seems to imply when they say you need the, the city's permission. So, um, hopefully you'll be able to regulate. But this is a pretty big gray area, um, that, that could be a huge gray area, so hopefully that gets filled in. Okay, um, let's see. Oh, there was one other thing that I wanted to mention that I actually saw today and wasn't aware of. Um, if you have a business that holds a tobacco license and they violate the, um, tobacco notes. If you have a business that, that has a tobacco license and they violate the, um, the law related to cannabis, either cannabis or hemp violation, or they sell one of those things without a license, you are required to either suspend their license for seven days or penalize them up to revocation of tobacco licenses. So, um, interesting. I, I wasn't aware of that, but it, it is something we'll have to figure out how to work that into your licensing scheme and figure out how that would be tracked. I mean, presumably, um, the city will know if, if something like that happens, but maybe not automatically. So we'll need to work on how that would, how that will interact with your tobacco licensing process.
Certainly sale without a license is the one that's hardest for us to know about until we get wind of the sales going on, I guess.
Right, and I mean, some of it you would happen, you know, some of it could happen on a compliance check that you, that you perform, but, um.
Are we performing compliance check or state?
Nope, you are.
We have no power almost, but we.
You got it. Um, so let me go back a little bit though to talk about what the, what the city is going to, with the, what weight the city is going to have to lift. So the city is going to have to, like I said, if you receive an application, like the, the state says, we want to issue a license, you have 30 days to respond. Um, you can register the business. Your registration of the businesses, you can charge a fee for. Your fee is capped. Um, the state, I mean, there's like 30 different license types. The retail licenses, the cap, the cap for the registration is 50% of the retail license or $500, whichever is less. So at least out of the gate here, your cap for retail license for cannabis is $500. And your cap for hemp looks to me like it's 125. Um, you are required to perform license checks. So both undercover decoy checks, so someone who's, you know, 18 or 19 goes in and tries to buy it, but you're also required to perform other compliance checks. Make sure that they're following all of these very detailed state regulations. So when I talked earlier about they're going to tell us how to do compliance checks, that would be really helpful. Um, hopefully they give some sort of a checkboard, but it would be a different, it wouldn't be, I mean, I suppose you could do it as, at the same time as the undercover decoy person goes in. Um, but it's, it's either a police officer or a city inspection compliance officer that goes in and goes through and makes sure they're compliant. Um, before you issue a registration, you are allowed to go in and perform an inspection. I'm not sure what you're inspecting when they're not open, but that's what it says. Um, like I talked about the tobacco license and I think, I think that is all I have, but I'm happy to answer any other questions. Did you want to talk about adult use at all? Just understand that a little bit. I can walk you through what's legal and what's not.
Sure.
Um, it's legal to possess or to transport paraphernalia, two ounces of cannabis flour, eight grams of cannabis concentrate, and edibles. Up to 800 milligrams. So possess and transport. It's legal to possess, but not transport up to two pounds of cannabis flower. You can't give anything, you may give to a person 21 or older. So this is how much you're allowed to give them. Um, two ounces or less of cannabis flower, eight grams or less of cannabis concentrate, 800 milligrams or less of edibles. Um, you can use these things in the following locations. Private residence, including the curdlegy yard, private property not accessible to the pub, public, and an establishment licensed to permit onsite consumption. Obviously, until you prohibit it, it's legal in public. Here's what's prohibited. Use, possession, transportation, or giving to anybody under 21. Use in a motor vehicle. Any use by means of inhaling, anywhere smoke is prohibited, smoking is prohibited. So no smoking, baby, inhaling, whatever sort of new fandagel they think to inhale and exhale, that's not allowed, wherever it would be prohibited by the Clean Indoor Air Act. Um, oh, haha, may not use or possess in a public school or a state correctional facility. Um, you can grow up to eight plants and four of them can be mature. I'm not really sure what that means, but, uh, there you go. Now on.
Four of them are immature.
I guess.
The plants.
I'm, I just have a question.
Oh, uh, uh, go ahead.
So, oh, no, I was just curious. So I was in a grocery store in a city not to be named, but it wasn't ours. Um, and they were selling cannabis the other day. And I was like, hmm, why are you getting to sell that? And they said, oh, well, it's legal. So, um, I was like, hmm, I don't think it is. But, uh, it wasn't our city, Joe, I promise. Um, so I was like, hmm, okay, but it was a grocery store, so it wasn't someone that normally would have had a tobacco license or a liquor license or, so I was very confused by that. And so if that were to, if we were to walk into a grocery store in Roseville, what would be the ramifications of that at this point?
Well, if they were selling THC edibles and they didn't have a license, they would be.
They weren't labeled cannabis.
Uh, well, it, you know, if it's over 0.3% THC, then it's cannabis and then it is not legal to sell without a license. And since there is no such thing as a license, the best thing to do would be to call somebody like Joe.
Somebody in that city.
I was out of my jurisdiction.
Like Joe. Yeah. But I was curious, um, there was a, a restaurant in Roseville that was selling THC beverages and they were, um, advertising externally that they were above a certain percentage. But now they have indicated that in Roseville, they're not allowed to do that anymore. So it's just kind of, obviously, there's just so much misinformation about what's allowed and what's not allowed. Um, so how, and then I was curious about, um, regulation of potency and such of, you know, in a beer can, it's pretty standardized pretty much, at least we assume that what it says on the outside. Is there any type of, um, proposed ruling on what, how cannabis is sold and that it would be a certain percentage of potency or, you know, that, I guess, you know, sometimes that there'd just be some quality control knowing what the product was or do we know anything like that?
I would say that the Office of Cannabis Management is going to be involved in that and you're way over my head.
I'm, I'm sure it's similar to producing alcohol. If ever there's, there's regulations in place that, that, you know, control that and check it and things like that. Outside of the jurisdiction cities though.
Yeah. And I do know with the THC products, it has to be below a certain potency and type of things. It's supposed to be labeled as such and there's very strict restrictions on how it's labeled and all that stuff. Although I still, even knowing that, looking at it, I think it's going to be hard to determine what it is unless you're really trained. So having guidance from the state would be really beneficial for us. I was just going to mention, um, you know, we are, we need to do compliance checks and other things. We do get a cut from the tax, the additional tax, not the sales tax, but additional tax of 10% that is filtered through the state and county and the city. You only get a portion of that if you have a store. If you don't have any stores, um, you wouldn't have any. And right now it's impossible to really determine what that amount would be. So that would help us somewhat offset our costs to regulate. So we'll have to kind of watch that and monitor that. I think, um, looking at this last slide, there's a couple of things that maybe we should have, um, some more immediate conversation on, I think we talked about the business moratorium. I, I would agree, there's not a rush to do that. But the private use of cannabis and hemp in public places such as our parks, starting August 1st, it's legal to possess it. I think it probably behooves us to maybe move forward with an ordinance for consideration here in August so we can have that so it's very clear on that. So I'm seeing heading on, so if we can start drafting that, we will. The other one is the cap on licenses for THC products. This is what we're capped at eight. So as mentioned, the law now allows liquor stores to have it, maybe as a matter of right, maybe as, as a process. Tonight we have a cub liquor store asking for a THC license. We have another liquor store MGM that apparently has one. But we're at the cap right now. We have one last week and another one today calling, asking, one in a restaurant and one in a liquor store asking for, I said, we're out of licenses for that. Um, so we need to have a policy conversation about that, whether we lift it, increase it, um, exempt liquor stores from doing, there's, there's a variety of ways to do that. But I just wanted to gauge the council's interest in kind of re-looking at that again. Right now we're saying, no, you can't have it. I do worry that there is a lot of businesses that are doing it, especially restaurants might be having something on their menu with a THC drink. You know, we just don't have the staff to go around and check all that. But, so having some clear direction, if we're going to lift that cap, change it to a different number, eliminate it, whatever, it would be very helpful for the staff from a regulatory perspective. So I'll just throw that out there.
Can I just give you one more detail that I, I forgot to give, which is as of October 1st of 2023, the state is requiring anybody selling THC edibles to register with the state. It's not a license, but they're required to register with the state as of October 1st, 2023. There's no regulations that come with that, but it is kind of a, a step toward, um, what'll be allowed. And that's just THC, it's not cannabis because they won't be licensed.
So I did have a, a question once again on the exclusive liquor store definition. Um, to my mind, that sounds like that's all they sell essentially. And so if they're off-sale, it's a liquor store. If they're on-sale, it's probably a bar as opposed to what we allow. But I'm not sure, that's what I wanted to clarify.
No, it, it's, it's on-sale and off-sale. It's, it's everything.
But it's, it's, but it, so it includes on-sale without any restrictions? In other words, like we put restrictions on our on-sale licenses, but that exclusive liquor store definition includes our on-sale as well?
Yes.
That's what you're saying. Okay, that's what I wanted to clarify. Because to me, from the point of view of like restaurants and what they do and the point of view of, of sales of products with the THC, we might be able to talk about looking at our limit and our cap, sort of in, in terms of those two things if we can. I don't know that we can, but that, that would be one way we could, we could talk about it maybe is, is differentiating between types of establishments maybe. That's just, I'm just throwing that out there because obviously we'll have to have the conversation. We need to have that conversation. I think we need the, the public use conversation. And to the extent that our ordinances relate, regulate public intoxication, which that may just be under state law, maybe we don't have anything under the city law, the city ordinances, we would like to have that looked at as well if we need to be addressing that at the city level.
I, I don't know that it's, public intoxication is something that, that cities can regulate.
I'm just not sure we do on the alcohol side, so I want to once again make sure if we do that we're consistent and if we don't, we maybe have a conversation if we want to.
Usually the way the regulation works is you're, it prohibits establishments from serving an obviously intoxicated person. And that, that prohibition against serving a person who's obviously intoxicated runs through the, the Cannabis Act as well.
Yeah, like I said, I wasn't sure what was in our own ordinances, but if we had something on, on that, I wanted to make sure once again we're covering all the possibilities. If we don't, and it's just under state law or whatever, then that's for the two. And obviously the cannabis laws cover driving, I mentioned boating, you know, and then we have the, to public consumption side. Anything else from the council, questions or concerns? Probably a lot of concerns. Too, too many to be enumerated here.
Yeah, it's a lot of things, unknowns, I guess.
Well, there's a lot of things that, um, it seems like this is more complicated of a regulation scheme than, for cities than even the liquor licensing, even though there are, you know, a couple of dozen types of liquor licenses as well. I mean, we get into all the different categories, so, which is still pretty complicated, but uh, yeah, this just seems like it's going to be more so, especially since we're getting it cold and we haven't done it before.
How, how does this compare to other states like, you know, there's been a, yes?
I don't honestly know. My, my assumption is, I mean, it, it, you know, for, for all of the holes in it, it's a very well-written, really covers, at least all the bases I can think of are in there.
Okay.
Um, so presumably it's, it's referenced several other states' regulations and, and chosen what they thought was best. But I don't know.
I haven't heard it was modeled closely after Colorado.
Colorado's, and they had a period of adjustment.
Other than possession amount, I understand a little bit higher number there. Anyway.
And no, no packaging design for children.
And there's advertising restrictions as well. Can't be advertised outdoors, can't have advertisements that target children in any way, including kind of as a pop-up and it's, it's pretty, the advertising restrictions are pretty, pretty robust as well.
I hope they have a huge PSA mission, especially around driving because it, that's pretty pervasive as you drive now.
Great. Thank you very much for the presentation and for giving us some things, some homework to do, or council work to do. But I, you know, I think we've got some, I think we've got a good idea of what the near-term priorities need to be and so we should be getting on those as quickly as we can. All right. Thank you again. Uh, next on our agenda then, we don't have any council initiated items to discuss this evening. Uh, consideration of council minutes, we've got the minutes of the July 10th regular meeting. Are there any additional changes or corrections or a motion to approve as presented?
A move to approve as presented.
Right, the move by Councilor Gruff, second by Councilor Ratten to approve the minutes from July 10th as presented. Uh, if there's no discussion, all those in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, and it passes.
Sustained.
Uh, abstain?
Abstained.
Three to zero with.
Sorry, it could be lost.
Councilmember Strong abstained, that's right. Not adding a present. All right, thank you. Uh, and it still passes with the majority. All right. That brings us then to our consent agenda. Uh, Mr. Trechton, would you give us a brief description of those consent items?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, item 10A approves payments in the amount of $2,260,249.27. Item 10B approves temporary gambling permits for Rose Town American Legion Auxiliary 542 in St. Rose of Lima Catholic Church for events they're hosting and a THC license for cub wine and spirits located at Harmer Mall. Item 10C receives the quarterly grants report. To date, the city has been awarded $1,145,188 in grant funds in 2023. Item 10D approves entering into an agreement with McGoff Facility Management LLC to continue to assist staff in managing our facilities. The current agreement is expired in 2023. I would note one change that, is that McGoff will now manage the Lexington Shops facility in addition to our other city campus facilities. Up to now, GON companies has managed Lexington Shops facility since we purchased it in 2018. Item 10E, removed from the consent agenda. Item 10F approves a preliminary plat called Villas of Reservoir Woods that will subdivide two existing parcels into six single-family home lots at 691 South Evans Schreier Avenue. The planning commission held a public hearing at, um, I'm sure it was June, I think it was July 7th, uh, meeting and recommended approval of the six, uh, at a, of the plat and on the six-oh boat. Item 10G accepts the State of Minnesota Auto Theft Prevention Grant that will fund a dedicated officer to investigate auto thefts for a period of three years. This is great news and will allow us to continue our work towards reducing automobile-related thefts. Um, we are near the end of the two-year original grant agreement, so we'll extend that for another three years, which is great. And then finally, item 10H approves entering into a professional services agreement with SRF Consulting for the county would be in Sailing Avenue pedestrian traffic study. And that is the consent agenda.
All right, thank you, Mr. Trechton. Is there a motion related to the consent items this evening?
Some, second.
Moved by Councilor Gruff, second by Councilor Strong. Discussion on the motion?
Not really. The only comment I'd have is on the, um, H, the, reading through that, that traffic study at Sailing and the, there wasn't any mention of state fair. And that is kind of a big issue in that corner during that time period. I'm sure they will back to that indefinitely.
We'll keep our eyes peeled for that.
Yes.
All right. Any other discussion on the motion? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of those items signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Post, and it passes unanimously four to zero. Uh, that brings us then to future agenda review, communications, reports, announcements, and council member-initiated items for future meetings. Mr. Trechton?
Yes, our next meeting is, uh, Yes, our next meeting is, thank you, Mr. Mayor, is August 7th. We'll have a public hearing for a liquor license for Smash Park and facilities being built in County Road C. We also wanna start the discussion on hotel licensing. I would also, based on the discussion tonight, bring some of this information back for the use in parks and as well as talk about the THC licensing. I'll work with City Attorney Kieran A. to see what we can come together. It won't happen necessarily in ordinance, maybe in reform, but not ready for approval, so we'll talk through that, and then we'll receive a second quarter financial report. Our next meeting after that, we'll only have two meetings officially in August, for business meetings at least. We have next meeting, August 21st, Hispanic Heritage Month. We'll have staff from Lincoln Minnesota Cities here to officially award us the Award of Excellence that we received earlier this summer. Also receive my preliminary budget. We have a reasonable accommodation ordinance that we want the city council to consider and begin the discussion of sacred settlement zoning code changes. Would also note, August 24th is when is the day for commissioned applicant interviews. That is Thursday, I think it looks, Thursday.
6:00 p.m.?
6:00 p.m. here at council chambers.
Currently on my calendar. All right. Any questions on the future agenda review or commentary? All right. Council, communications, announcements, reports?
We had the event on Saturday, but we ended up getting some rain at 3:00 o'clock, so we threw about half of the program with Arts Rosewood and the 75th birthday party over. So, we have cake left. I brought one, I brought one to the fire department because of work.
I'm glad you didn't bring one here tonight.
I didn't think about it. Just think about it. But it was, it was fun doing the part we did, and the mayor did a good job of greeting everyone, and there was a good crowd there.
Sure.
The weather had continued smoothly.
It was good, we pulled up, or tried to pull up tents, or some of them got pulled up by the wind.
I was surprised at how many people did get everything done in 15 minutes.
It was a good event with lots of good, hard work from many people, and I appreciate that. One of the things that I thought of at the event and hearing the stories about Roseville history and sort of people's lives in Roseville is Arts Roseville may wanna consider, or others may wanna consider the possibility of sort of recording some of that, you know, even maybe even more than what was gonna be at the event for sort of historical record and maybe there's a partnership with the Historical Society or something like that. Great, great. So, yeah, I would encourage that because that was, that was, to me, besides the performances, I think that was one of the highlights of the event, was hearing, hearing the story and how ironic it was that it was about the tornado in '81 going through Central Park, but, yes, exactly, so.
When another was going to talk about how that part became, came into being, which would have been interesting for newer people.
Yes.
You're sitting on Highway 36.
All right. Any other communications, reports, announcements? Otherwise, the only other order of business this evening is a motion to adjourn.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Ratten, seconded by Councilman Strong to adjourn. No discussion on such motion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Posed, and it passes unanimously four to zero. We are adjourned at 7:12 p.m. Thank you.